Welcome and good evening to the January eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the Milton School Committee. As is our tradition, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
... pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a few treats for you. The girls' track team here. We have an Aladdin presentation I think we're going to open with, so Superintendent Gormley, take it away.
So I promise you, this will be two highlights that you'll have a hard time matching in your school committee agenda. So first, may I invite up Principal Dr. Karen Spalding to the table? And do you want to give a little introduction? And then invite the Aladdin actors, actresses, to join us?
So we are delighted to be here this evening. I did bring with me a few members of the Pierce Players cast for the Aladdin production that is happening tomorrow as opening night. We do have a dress rehearsal for fifth graders tomorrow morning, but tomorrow's opening night. And we have a performance tomorrow night at seven, Friday at seven, and Saturday at 2:00 PM. And we do have tickets available at the door for all of those performances, although it's selling out. So I am going to invite them up here. They are going to introduce themselves for real and as well as who they play in the play. And they'll tell you a little bit about what is so exciting about Aladdin Junior.
I'm Sam Higgins and I play Jafar.
I'm Gabrielle Winkler and I play Iago.
I'm Anna Hoi and I play the genie.
I'm Olivia Kettler and I play Princess Jasmine.
I'm Will Milliken and I play Aladdin.
I'm Brendan Cullen and I play the Sultan.
And who's going to tell us what's so exciting about Aladdin Junior?
Well, it's a really fun show. There's a ton of great choreography and the energy's always spectacular at every single rehearsal. And it's just a lot of fun.
What I like about it is, once you're there, just everyone seems like your family. And when you walk in, you know you're going to have a lot of fun. And you're just excited to be there, meet all your friends. And yeah, it's fun.
They'll take questions now if you have some.
So my question is, are we going to have a musical number?
Yes. Yeah, yes, yes. Oh, friend like me, Jane. Take it away. Go! You all sing together.
Do you guys not have music with you? No? Anna, why don't you choose something that everyone can sing? Unless, do they back you up on "Friend Like Me"?
Yeah.
All right, oh, then that's fine. Okay. I'm sorry, this is my dance teacher thing. Yeah, yeah. Scoot over a little bit, hon. Over to the left. Yeah, okay. We would elevate.
Well, Ali Baba had them forty thieves. Shehrazad had a thousand tales. Well, Mr. You're in luck, 'cause up your sleeves you got a friend and magic never fails. You got some power in your corner now, some heavy ammunition in your camp. You got some punch, pizzazz, yahoo and howl. See, all you gotta do is drop that lamp and I'll say, "Mr. Aladdin, sir, what was your tour free?" Let me take your order, jot it down. You ain't never had a friend like me, no, no, no. Life is your restaurant and I'm your maître d'. Come on, whisper what it is you want. You ain't never had a friend like me. Yes, sir, we pride ourselves on service. Say what you wish, it's yours, tradition. How about a little more baklava? Try some of column A, try all of column B. I'm in the mood to help you, dude. You ain't never had a friend like me.
Woo! Thank you very much.
Now we're excited.
Break a leg, get some rest, and we'll see what the show...
We're so proud of you. So coming tonight, we know that it will sell out all three productions now.
I got my robo-call from you guys before I left tonight, so everyone knows about it, which is good. Did you get one too?
What were the showtimes again?
Thursday and Friday at seven and Saturday at two.
And how much are the tickets, hon, and they can be sold at the door?
Ten dollars.
For everyone, right? Okay, great. All right, well, good luck. We did discuss doing a song and they were a little nervous, so you inspired them. That was impressive.
It's more like boss them, but that's okay. Whatever works.
Dr. Spalding, here's a tip. Don't bring them in costume if they're not going to do a musical.
All right, thanks Karen.
So a hot act to follow, but very exciting tonight, the arts and athletics. May we have Coach and Girls Cross Country Team join us right up at the table. Come right up. Our female student athletes and Coach Tom Shaw.
Let me introduce them all.
I said it's nice to connect, as with the Pierce Players, the names with the faces of these famous individuals we see tweeted about and read about in the newspapers. So maybe if they all get in the camera's view, that would be wonderful. And we'll turn it over to Tom Shaw.
Sure. Here are your two thousand sixteen Girl State Cross Country Champions. I have Lisa Leary, Captain Madison Gerroth, Mary Mitchell, Sophie Deal, El Afenato, Genevieve Connolly, Ruby Baker, Emmy Shuey, Bridget Mitchell, Captain Naomi Nagasi, Clota Corcoran, Captain Colette O'Leary, and Grace Dwyer. Want me to talk a little about the season? Sure. Yeah. You know, it's easy to think, you know, we won it the year before and so this was a repeat for us. And, you know, it wasn't easy the first time and it wasn't easy the second time. But one big difference for me this season, and I said this to the girls often throughout the season, was for me as a coach, it was the easiest season of coaching for me, just like these girls knew what they wanted, they knew how to work hard, they had had success before, so they knew what it took, they knew what grit was. I didn't teach them any of these things. So it often felt like a practice. I was just there to, you know, be the adult presence. But these girls really wanted something special this year and really, it's all about them. I really can't say enough about that. You know, there are many seasons when I've coached kids and felt that my role was, you know, just necessary to rise them up to where they needed to get to. And these kids were already there. And so it's not by accident they repeated as champions this year. And one of the biggest moments of the season was the divisional championship, when, that was actually our toughest race of the season, when our top two runners had their worst race of the season. And usually that spells disaster and it was certainly an anxious race for all of us to watch. But the other runners in the team, there were seven in the race, all realized what was happening and instead of, you know, in that moment of panic, being negative about it, they stood up, you know, they rose to the occasion and lifted their teammates up. And the team that came in second that day, their coach came to me after the meet and said to me, you know, "You guys won today because today you guys ran as a team. Your teammates picked each other up today." And they were really, you know, the perfect example of what we're all looking for in a team title. And it was just, that's the best compliment you can get when your toughest competition comes up to you and just says how impressed they were with how your team handled adversity and rose to the occasion. And I think that kind of really describes what these girls are capable of and who they are. And, you know, and it's why they have such success. And following that, we went to the state championship where nobody had a bad race really that day and defended our title. And the following week, we went to the regional championships in New York, where the top two teams go to nationals. And that was our goal for the season, was to go to nationals. But we were eight points short. And that is, eight points short is a very small gap in cross country, especially at the meet of that caliber. We finished fourth out of the eight. It's the Northeast Regional Championship, there are eight states represented. And we finished fourth place, eight points out of a ticket to Oregon for nationals. That's certainly the goal for next year, is to get that ticket. And just a great group of girls and you guys should be very proud of everything they've done. I certainly am. And just couldn't be more pleased and happy to be working with them.
And the town and the school district, very proud of you. How many seniors do we have on the team?
Four, yeah. Yeah, there are twenty girls on the team. Five seniors sounds right.
And before I turn it over to the school committee, I should have asked one of our student athletes, we have another champion in the room. Coach was named the Coach of the Year, one man, one boys athletic cross country coach and one girls by the USA Track and Field Cross Country Coaches Association, the Coach of the Year from Massachusetts. And the way you eloquently spoke tonight and the way you coach and the way you teach and lead in Milton High School, well earned and well deserved.
They made me look...
Ms. Varela.
I just wanted to echo Superintendent Gormley in that how proud you make the, you know, you make the school district and you make the town. You should be so proud of your accomplishments. And I think even prouder of what Coach Shaw had said, and I know some of your moms and even just chit-chatting with them through the year about what a great, like a great team you are as far as supporting each other. And I know there's a lot of talent there and a lot of drive, but I think that that character that you all have might be the thing that really gets you over the top. And I just want to congratulate you on that and hope that you continue it if you guys run in the winter now and if people do track and field in the spring too. And then my only other question is, for the senior girls, is anyone thinking about running in college? Yes, no, maybe so?
The UMass.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I know, yeah, that you're going to UMass, right? Yeah, yeah, good for you, hon. And the other ones you don't know yet? Yeah? Just was wondering. All right, well, good luck to you guys. Okay, great.
Dr. Donahue?
So I will say, congratulations. It's great having you up here year after year. This is, we're going to have to get used to this. So my comment to all of you is that sustained excellence is impressive and it's not an accident. And you're here because of a lot of hard work. And I hope you all realize that. I hope you all realize what you've accomplished and you take that with you because this is significant. This is a significant personal and group victory for you all that you should carry with you as you go forward in life. So, well done, all of you. Well done.
Excellent what he said. Some of you are running winter track too, right? I saw some of you in the paper over the weekend for winter track as well.
Yeah, they had, we just had these...
That's why I got confused when I came in.
We just had the state relay championships and we, actually Milton High School has never won the state relay championships until this past Sunday.
You were in the Globe. There was a picture of the four of you.
Yeah, it was the first time ever for this high school to win that meet of the girls.
And I read the article, it was dramatic, like Ella, did someone knock you down and then you got back up? It was like a movie, like a scene from a movie or something. It was great. Good for you.
Keep up, keep on running and enjoying and congratulations.
So, we did have you last year, here last year, as Dr. Donahue said. But I think that this is the first time ever that we've had a Milton team that was state champ two years in a row in anything, in any sport. So that's an achievement that goes right into the history books, Milton history books. And as Ms. Eberhart said, I read, the accomplishments are coming so quickly it's hard to keep up. So we said, yeah, let's have the Girls Cross Country Team here because they won the state championship. And while we're waiting for that to happen, we read that they set a record in the four by eight hundred relay. And as Ms. Varela said, El Afenato fell and they still broke the record. They still set a record and they might have hit the all-time record if that hadn't happened. So this is, this is just, as Dr. Donahue said, excellence at its best. We're extraordinarily proud of you and keep up the good work.
Yeah. Cheers.
One last thing I do just want to throw in there along with what you're saying, at our banquet that we had at the end of the season, you know, we have tables and, you know, each table could take like ten people maybe or eight. And the girls on their own decided that they didn't want to be sitting at separate tables. So they connected the tables together so that during the banquet, the whole team was together at one sitting. And to what many of you were saying a few moments ago, you know, this type of success and this type of excellence that these girls bring is a byproduct of many things, and one of which is who they are as people and how they take care of each other and how they support each other. And that was really kind of a nice, cool way to end the season at the banquet, without putting those tables together. And, you know, again, I had nothing to do with that. And, yeah, it's why, it's part of what makes this such a wonderful, you know, group to be part of and work with.
If I might say one thing in closing, as I look at the student athletes and you hear their names and you read about them and read their tweets, I think it's important for the viewing public and the school committee to know that every one of you excels in multiple areas. And when I look at you, I think about when you were in kindergarten and Assistant Superintendent Sheehan is ready to burst when some of the Aladdin players she had in kindergarten or some of you. And so, you know, I'd like to put you in front of the parents the other night who are preschoolers or the parents of the full-day kindergarten students of the first grade next week. And so for the viewing public to know that you excel in track, but as I look at each one of you and hear your names as you walk the halls of Milton High School, you excel academically and you're in so many different clubs and activities, I want you to know that we are so, so proud of you. And I look at you and you are, you epitomize student leaders. So congratulations and we couldn't be prouder of each of you.
Thank you for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Good luck.
You can go home and study for midterms now. Fun, fun, fun.
Midterms.
So just one change in the order of the agenda. We have Don Kennedy here from NESDEC to give us a presentation on enrollment. I'm going to move that up and then the superintendent will do the rest of her report. And in the audience, we have David Johnson from the Milton Times, editor of the Milton Times, who used to cover the schools and has been gracious enough to give us his time. During the time that David covered the schools, we had some of the best school coverage from the Milton Times ever, so we're pleased to have him. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you. I'd like to, if it's okay, there are only fourteen slides. And I'd like to go through all the slides so that I don't lose my train of thought. I'm going to pose some questions, show you some data, and then answer those questions with the data. But I'd like to go through that and then I'm happy to take questions for whatever length of time you want.
That's fine. Don, just let me set the stage a little bit. We've talked about this in very brief intervals at previous meetings, but over the last few months, the school committee has been looking at the question of enrollment. It's something that is of great importance and the reason is that we're seeing some trends. Initially, we thought some of the enrollment increases that we saw at the elementary level might be a bubble. So we asked NESDEC to take a very detailed look at the data that they have, and Don will talk about the various things that they look at. But also, we asked the question, can we start to confirm that this is in fact a trend and not a bubble? The good news that you'll hear about is that the Milton schools are very, very popular, particularly at the elementary level. That's credit to the good work that the superintendent and her team have been doing over the last ten years. But that's the good news and the bad news. The bad news is that we are coming dangerously close to capacity for kindergartens. That's been the case for the last few years and Don is going to talk about why. He's going to show you that in black and white. So we are faced with some daunting decisions about how to address this issue, but the first thing that we owed, we thought, the viewing public and the taxpayers and voters of Milton was some very detailed data on what we're seeing. So this is the first of the presentations that the school committee will see and the Milton community will see. And then once that we've gotten all that on the record, we'll begin our deliberations about what to do about it. But, Don, if you would?
Thank you. This is essentially a devolved one, but you had fairly flat enrollments, actually you went back ten years before this to nineteen ninety-six.
Don, you'll need to use a mic there.
Okay. We can hear you, the people at home can't. Can you hear me now?
No.
The TV people say it's fine, so.
If, this chart starts with two thousand six, but if you went back to nineteen ninety-six, you'd see that right through here, the numbers were in the twenty, thirty-five, thirty-seven hundred range for ten years. Then there was a little bit of bump up and this was the point at which in about two thousand, you started to do planning for the future and by two thousand two, you were doing the elementary school construction. There has been little emphasis since the beginning of the elementary school building projects, little emphasis on reporting to the community about the enrollments because they've been essentially flat. The news has been similar every year. NESDEC has done annual projections, they've been used by the school department with the school committee in planning budgets each year. But there wasn't any huge message of any real news to tell the community in that fifteen year period. But then we began to see a rise and it's something that I'm going to describe, I grew up on a main island, so I'm going to describe it as a sea change because you're now getting a growth of fifty or sixty students a year. And we believe the factors are all in place, and not just one factor, but multiples, that indicate this may go on for as much as ten years, as long as we don't have another real estate recession like we did in two thousand eight. But the economy is going to be the driving force. And at least at this point, it appears that the factors are all in place for a number of years to go forward with this growth to have it continue. So let's pose three questions. What's the data reveal? We're going to show you some of that. As Chairman Walker said, or asked, are we seeing trends and not a one-time event? And what is the strength of our conclusions? What kind of data do we have? So we're going to try to answer those questions. There's a pattern beginning in two thousand eleven. If you look right, right in here, there was a drop from this year to the next year of a minus forty-one total in the school department. But since then, there's been a consistent rise for five years in a row. So that one trend at least is a very consistent trend, not a blip, has continued each year, has been less, more than the year before. And the particularly interesting feature there is that eighty-two percent of that growth is in grades K through five. And only eighteen percent of it is in the middle school or high school. So for the last five years in a row, we've been seeing a growth in your K through five The total amount of growth in the school system for the last historical, during these historical years, have been about thirty-eight per year, growing over the ten years. But as I said before, eighty-two percent of it is right in there. And in those last five years, you've grown by a hundred and eighty-six students just at the elementary level. So in K through five today, you've got a hundred and eighty-six more kids than you had in K through five, five years ago. And it's, they've come in relatively equally, so the tide has changed. Whereas it was a pretty flat enrollment for a very long period of time, you're now getting a rise. I have to keep remembering to point at the computer and not at the screen to get this to change. Okay, this is looking to the future. So this is the current year, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and these are the four thousand students, or forty-one hundred if you want to count the pre-Ks that we have. And this looks forward into the future. It shows the births, which have been either declining or flat over the last few years, although the next three years worth of births are higher than they recently have been. And we already know that, they already live here. So the next three kindergartens, even if you weren't having real estate growth, which you do, but even if you didn't, you've got more births, so you'd be getting more students anyway. The birth year that will fuel the kindergarten that's coming in this fall has forty-five additional children over and above the number that fueled the birth year of the current kindergarten. So there's a plus forty-five right there, but you're also selling a lot of homes, which is a completely different set of factors. But these are some of the rises that we're dealing with. Again, if you look at just the grade K through five level, because that's where most of the growth is occurring, we believe you're going to see about twenty-six a year more per year for the next ten years. So two hundred and fifty-eight more, we expect you're going to have ten years from now than you have today. So the rise that has gone on for five years, we believe, is going to continue for the next ten. The factors seem to be in place to promote that. It worked. I got it right this time. This chart shows the connection between the birth year, these are the births, these are the births starting in two thousand one. So this, that fueled the kindergarten of two thousand and six and it goes all the way up to the current year. This is where we are now. The two thousand eleven birth year fueled the two thousand sixteen kindergarten. And this arrow showing you how many more kindergarteners showed up than had been born kindergarteners showed up than had been born net five years before is the largest amount of growth with net move-ins. There were 92 net move-ins over and above the births. And if, I'm going to show you a chart in a minute that takes it back 40 years, because we, we know there are plenty of people in town who have cut long memories, and never before, at least in a 40-year period, have there been that many net move-ins to any Milton kindergarten. It's a very unusually large number. And this pattern that you see in here, I'm going to show you this same pattern expressed differently in numbers, but these are all record years. You, you talked about the girls' cross-country team setting records, well, you're setting records in kindergarten, and as Chairman Walker said, whatever it is you're doing, whatever it is you're offering as, as an educational program, the parents are voting with their feet, and they want to have their children in the Milton schools, and this is particularly true at the elementary level. So, let's look at this same information expressed a little bit differently. This looks backwards 40 years. Let's, let's take this year as, as one sample. In 2011, there were 248 births to Milton mothers, and in the fall of 2016, this previous fall, those 228, plus 92 more, making a kindergarten size of a, of a robust 340, showed up in kindergarten five years later. So, I'm sure some of these 248 moved away, but enough new people moved in so that you ended up getting 340 kindergarteners from a birth year of 248. The, all the years in red are the years in which there were at least 40 more who showed up in kindergarten than had been born in Milton five years before. And notice that with the exception of a 45 here and a 54 there, there has never been a period in the last 40 years when this many people have moved into town or, or chosen to send their, their children to, to Mil- kindergarten. They, they want to be in, in the public schools. There was a period here which was quite robust, and over a 10-year period, there was an average of 33 additional move-ins during this 10-year period. But the five-year period that you've had right here has recently been averaging 68 more showing up in kindergarten than had been born the year before, and that never ever happened before in, in Milton. And of the 400 sets of enrollment projections that we do every year throughout New England, we, we do more than just Massachusetts. We do the other five states as well. I can't think of another school district that has had such a robust entry into kindergarten and have it be sustained for that long a period of time. The, the, the only one, the only district that, that comes close is Lexington, but Lexington has got many of the same issues that they're trying to deal with, that Chairman Walker was talking about, maybe on the radar of, of Milton. Let's go to another bit of, of data. There are a number of miscellaneous things here that, that we talk about when we do enrollment projections, but let's just focus in for the amount of time we have available on, on non-public. We will soon know, because the report will be due in six weeks, we'll soon know how many students are residents of Milton but go to parochial and independent, non-public schools for which their parents are paying tuition in, in regular education. These are the numbers that were true last January 1st, so it's the most recent information that we have. And you'll see there's an average of about 35 or so at the elementary grades, in, in each grade, and then a little bit larger set of numbers, the middle school grades, and higher numbers at the, the high school. But let's go to a historical chart that looks at this over a long period of time. So, this is showing how many residents of Newton, of Milton, were having their parents pay tuition to send them to parochial and independent, non-public schools. And this goes back, starting with the year 2005 and, and coming up to the, the, I was going to say the present, the, the most recent present we have, the 2015, 16 year, will, will fill in the, the most recent year in six weeks. But I'm particularly interested in these numbers for the, the trend reason. If you look at the elementary trend, you see that it's substantially different from the middle school and high school, just as we saw in one individual year, the high school numbers were greater. About 30 to 33 percent of the high school age students who live in Milton have, in the last 10 years, been enrolled in a non-public school, and that stayed pretty much the same. And that's simply a, a feature of Milton's demography. This is who the community is. At the middle school level, those numbers have been in the low twenties, anywhere between there, well, there's a 16 percent and, and there's a 23 or 24, so roughly averaging around 20 percent. But what's particularly important, and especially because of the other factors that we talked about earlier, is to follow the trend in these numbers. At the elementary level, there, there used to be around 20 percent of the elementary age students who lived in Milton were in non-public schools. Then, it dropped down into the high teens, and back four years ago was about 16 percent. Then, it became 13, then about 12, 11.9, and last year, it, it dropped to 9.9. So, this is another independent set of data, which is part of the trend, and the trend is to want to be here in the Milton public schools as opposed to being a resident of Milton, who doesn't go to the Milton public schools and goes, and you pay tuition and, and go to some other non-public school. So, this is another separate, independent trend, which we'll be interested to see how this is confirmed. It's dropped several percentage points in the last four or five years, which are parallel to the elementary data that you saw earlier, which was showing you who lives in Milton and goes to the Milton public schools. That was the earlier set of charts. Now, these are people who have lived in Milton, and they used to go to non-public schools, but now they're going to the Milton public schools at the elementary level. This is changing, and it's a second or third set of independent data. Now, for something totally different Monty Python says. The Milton realtors have been selling about, in this period of time, on the bubble, just before the 2008 recession, were, were selling in the range of 338 or so homes a year. Then, you can see those numbers dropped as they did everywhere, and here's a 233, I guess this was the, the lowest number. So, in this period of time, the, the numbers ranged for an eight-year period at a 246 average compared to the, the 338 that it had been before the recession. That would be a drop of 28 percent in the number of homes per year being sold, although it sustained 72 percent of, of its pre-recession vigor. That's better, Milton did better than many surrounding communities, which were in the 50 to 80 percent range, but most, most of them were in the 50 to 60 to 65 percent range. Milton never dropped below 72. So, the recession hit everywhere, but hit Milton somewhat less hard than it, than it had hit many other communities. And you can see these numbers in the 230s and 40s have now gone back up to 308, 283, 305. This 277 is through November 30. Looks like this number could have hit, once we get the, the December data, will, the 277 will have grown to a number that's very close to 300, could, could be as high as the 305, but, but certainly will be in the 290s. Over here, we're looking at condos, and you can see there are a couple of good years here where more than 40 were sold, then the numbers dropped, and in, at the same time, there were fewer single-family homes being sold. There were only nine sold as condos in 2009. Then, it's gotten back into the twenties, hasn't totally recovered, although this appears to be a good year. Once we know the, the data for December, that 29 will probably be in, in the 30s. So, adding that to a number over here that's close to 300 will have shown the total number of sales have come back. Separate and somewhat independent from it all is the median sales price of a single-family home. That, that price, above which half and below which half were sold, the, the middle price of, of all the, the sales. And I don't know of any community in eastern Massachusetts that has gone through the rise in median sales price as rapidly as Milton has, has gone in these last three or four years, because the median for 2016 is 620, but that 620 is a number that would have been unheard of back in these, these earlier days. But look at the numbers hovering in the, the 400 range, and then whizzing through the fives and getting all the way up to six within three years. Even the other communities that are having a lot of schoolchildren move in and are selling a lot of more homes than they, they were before, Lexington, Belmont, Andover, I mentioned some of these, but places that have good educational reputations are now selling many more homes, but they're still not having the additional growth in the median sales price that, that Milton has had. People want to be here, and many of those people have school-aged children that they want to be in the Milton public schools. So, there's a trend toward growth, and this, we've talked about before, but it, it summarized this, this way to show the growth in the total school system. So, here, we're not just talking about the elementary level, but the, the growth is, looks like for the next 10 years is going to be in the 50 to 60 range with that much increase each year from, from one to the next. So, let's try to make some answers to the questions that we posed. The, these were the three questions. We've seen some of the data. We asked, how do we know that we're seeing trends and not a one-time event? We've showed you some multiple data points, some having to do with children, some having to do with housing sales, some having to do with children who used to be in private schools but now are in public school. What is the strength of our conclusions? We believe it's, it's strong, and I'll let you read this, but Milton, for five separate years in a row, since 2011, 12, and especially in grades K-5, have been growing. And the non-public schools we've mentioned, the housing sales during the same timeframe have also increased, as has the median sales prices. And I didn't even talk about construction, but the new and proposed construction is another stream that we will get information on and we can track, but just knowing anecdotally from having done some phone calling and reading newspapers, there's information there that's going to point in the same direction. And we do need to remember that Milton is not unique. There are other educationally respected districts, not a lot of them, but, but some that are experiencing similar enrollment growth and similar space concerns, similar to what Chairman Walker was, was talking about. So, I'll end my spiel, and I would be happy you've been very attentive, and I appreciate your letting me go all the way through without the interruption. But what are, what are your questions? How can I help? Yes?
Thank you very much for the information. It's a little bit frightening to me to think about the school system being expanded by that many in that short a time, but we need this information, and I'm very grateful for it. My question to you was based on your experience. When we look at the median home sales and that rapid rise that you pointed out in the, in the price from 450 to 620 really quickly, in your experience, at what point does that become a kind of tipping point? You know, I mean, at some point, it's going to become so cost prohibitive to, to a larger number so that wouldn't then naturally the numbers of people who could afford to move in drop down at some point, and the rise might not be as rapid?
That, that's a really good question. If I knew more about real estate, I suppose I probably should be selling it and not doing what I do. That's a great question. I will get back to Dr. Gormley about this, because it, it's worth checking out. I'm sure there must be places in the northeast that have gone up as quickly that I just don't know about, and I'd be curious to see what happened to them and how did that change their demographic, you know, if, if it did. It certainly, if, if nothing else, is a signal that the inventory is not sufficient to keep up with the demand, and the realtors do say there are a lot of multiple offer situations, and that's, of course, partly what drives the, the, the numbers so high. But I, I don't know the answer to your question off the top of my head, but it, it's one of the, the bits that needs research, and we'll, we'll keep doing research, because we, we get new factors every few months, and we'll be in constant conversation with, with Glenn and Mary.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Craighead, I was writing notes to the superintendent, so I heard the answer, but not the question. What was the question?
The question was, has, what has he seen in terms of, you know, this rapid rise, you know, the rapid rate in terms of the median house sale price rise? So that at some point, I wondered what the tipping point was. At what point does it become cost prohibitive enough that you don't have fifty more kids in kindergarten every single year? And he also pointed out, really good point, it, some of it has to do with inventory and demand, but at some point, you know, I was just wondering what he's seen in terms of the trend, because it's really rapid now. Will it naturally tend to slow down, given some of these factors?
Would you get a different type buyer who might not have young children?
Yeah, exactly.
Yep. So, I want to thank you very much. This is, I was in some of the early in meetings with you, and this is really what we were looking for as far as understanding all, how many factors, you know, do we need to really look at this to come to the realization that this is a trend and not a bubble? And, and I wanted to also speak to Dr. Craighead's point, but, I mean, I'm wondering that even if, and your comment about would be people moving in who don't have kids, but even if people all of a sudden just couldn't, I don't know, they couldn't afford the six twenty-nine or if it goes above it, would it just, you know, would that then just cost the real estate market to say, okay, well, we, you know, it has to drop by a hundred thousand? But I don't know if sales would just stop completely. I mean, you know, I don't know, but, but I mean, when I look at the number of houses that are all of a sudden being sold in this, like, in the five years, you know, post-recession, you know, I definitely think that it's a concern. I hope that the viewers at home, you know, if they see this, and I know the Milton Times is here reporting on it, but this is definitely an issue that I know myself and some, you know, other school committee members, you know, we want to get this information out to the town as a whole, not, you know, school-aged parents, but even people who are seniors in the town, you know, but to the realization that, you know, we keep on getting featured as the best place to live in Massachusetts, but this is the consequence of, you know, good schools and good communities and et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, we, we as a school district and we as a town have to be mindful that, you know, if, you know, that we have these trends, that it seems like it's going to continue, and, you know, sooner or later, there's not going to be any more space. So, I mean, I think that's an issue that people need to be aware of and be thinking about and analyzing, that, you know, I don't know how mu, you know, we don't know how much longer we're going to be able to maintain space in the elementary where, you know, the class sizes aren't just going to be tipping over the point where a good education can be given, especially at the kindergarten level. You can't have twenty-eight kids, you know, in a kindergarten class. It's just not going to work. So, we have to contemplate new space, because that's an issue that is realistic, and the town needs to be aware of, you know. So, you know, I'm going to say the big bad word, but it will need an override eventually, a couple, you know, not right now, but, but people need to be educated and look at the facts and understand the consequences if these four elementary schools just become overcrowded, so.
Her point that price makes a difference, I've seen in my own experience, I spent my first nineteen years in the Weston schools, and there never was a class graduating from the high school that had all of its students come from the kindergarten year. There were many children who had joined the class in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, whatever, because the price of the homes was such that the parents needed to be a little bit farther into their career in order to afford the home, but that was where they wanted their child to be. And so, that may be another factor, that people still come here, but they just don't come here quite as quickly if the homes are too expensive.
Ms. Everhart?
So, even, and that's a really good point that Dr. Craighead brought up, but even if you just look at the percent of non-public enrollment, that dropped from eighteen point two percent in two thousand five, two thousand six, to nine point nine percent in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. So even, that's a, that's half, you know, that's a big change in the number of people that decided, okay, I'm not going to pay to send my child to a private or parochial school, I'm going to go to the Milton public schools. So even if, that, so maybe that's a choice, that house prices go up, you pay more for a house in a community like this, and those, that number's going to change continuously. So, that's a pretty startling number all in itself, that particular drop there, because more people choose it as an option.
Yep.
You pay more for your home, you invest in that, then you have a wonderful school system, you're going to send your child to the public school. You're going to support it that way.
So, the solution may already be at work.
Yeah.
And the numbers you're quoting may be part of a solution.
Who knows? Right, I don't know.
For those families.
That's a big drop, though, half.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Dr. Donahue?
So, I want to say, first of all, thank you, that, this is very dense data, and I think you presented it very well, and a lot of different pathways and streams, and that was very well put together and well executed, so thank you. And I'll sort of ask this for the record, because I think I can intuit your response, but your projections based on all of this, all of these data, all of these factors, how confident are you, you know, moving forward into the future?
I guess the best answer I can give you is that the research we've done, because we do enough projections each year, so we, and we do enough districts, year after year after year, so we can see how accurate our, or how much variance there is between how many we told the district we thought they would have, and how many they ended up having. And what our projections tend to do is mirror the research that I've read, that the, what the Weather Service, when they show you a TV presentation of where the tornado or the hurricane is going to go, they talk about a cone of uncertainty, and they show you at, in the next four hours, it's going to be between here and here, and the next twelve hours, it'll be between there and there, and by Wednesday, it'll be, you know, a little bit farther away. Our projections tend to be within, fall within one percent per year, plus or minus, of what ultimately is the projection. So, at five years out, it could be plus five percent or minus five percent, and ten years out could be plus or minus ten. And that's what the research says is the closest you're ever going to get, and we are able to do that. But if you think about it, if you were doing the kind of demographic work that I do, and it was two thousand and six or two thousand and seven, nobody was projecting the two thousand and eight recession.
Yeah.
And that came as a surprise to a lot of people in the country who are way above my pay grade. And so, things are going to happen in the next five to ten years that we have no idea what they are, and maybe nobody will be predicting, but at least we know that many multiple and somewhat independent factors all seem to be lined up in the same direction, particularly as they affect K through five age children. And a lot of people want to be here, and they continue to vote with their pocketbook and come to Milton and enroll their kids in the Milton public schools, and it looks like that's going to continue. I've got a very high degree of confidence in the short-term projection, you know, the three to five years. When you start talking, you know, beyond five years, you're also adding another factor, because you don't yet know what the births will be for that, the kindergarten that's six years away. Those children haven't been born yet, and there are factors that could affect that that we, that can change. And, you know, we're just going into a new administration in the country, but there's not only uncertainty about what's going to happen in our country, look at all the other countries as well. There's Brexit, and the EU, and the civil wars, and all kinds of things. So, and the world has become so global in its markets that good things and bad things anywhere seem to affect other parts of the world in ways that are more powerful than they used to. So, it's hard to get enrollment projections to be as on-target as you'd like them from some distance out, but given all the ways that we have of doing it, and all the different ways we can structure the data, that's the best that we know. And I could write something for Dr. Gormley about how, how much the variance has been for previous Nez-Zeck projections for Milton, so you can get a sense of how it worked in the past, that doesn't automatically mean the future's going to be the same, but you can get an idea of how much variance is there.
Well, thank you. I think that's a very comprehensive answer, and it's what I intuited, your answer would be, I think plus or minus one percent is a very good goal, one percent per year, or very good track record, I should say. And, you know, my feeling is that this data definitely does sort of bear out that trend, but I think it would be, I think it would be helpful as sort of we go forward, and we talk to people, and they ask us questions, that we can say to, you know, people who ask us questions, that, you know, for the level of detail that you've gone into for our district, you are very successful in predicting outcome enrollments, and therefore we feel very comfortable, you know, giving people those numbers and making decisions based on those numbers.
Well, the Milton superintendents, for the last twenty years, have been very faithful in making sure that we received the data shortly after October first, and we turned it back to them. And when you do a district every single year, and the administration, the school committee don't miss a year, we can identify red flags for you a little bit farther in advance than we could for some other communities that we don't do every single year, because not every district is as planful as Milton has been.
And then, I just have two more comments, if you don't, so, more for us, less for you, but I think when we talk to others, it'll be helpful when we share this data ourselves with others in graph form, if we indicate the years where we transitioned into a full-day kindergarten program, and the years where we transitioned into a tuition-free full-day kindergarten program, so that people can see, I'm not, I don't think that those are the primary driving reasons that we are where we are. I think a lot of it's simply demographics, and we have a very competitive school district, and those are sort of ancillary subjects to a degree, but it would be nice to be able to sort of show that this trend line moves to a degree independent of those.
One thing that's built into the kind of kindergarten program that you've constructed is a very high probability of success educationally, and to the extent that you achieve that, which you already are, that's going to make more people say, I want to be in Milton.
Yeah, no, I agree. And then I think the other thing that we need to keep an eye on is that as we become increasingly competitive with some of the private schools at the middle school and high school level, we'll need to pay attention to the numbers there as well, and see if we are, if we retain, similarly to elementary schools, if we're retaining more students than we had traditionally done. So, but excellent presentation, thank you.
May I add one thing to what Dr. Donahue had said, that when we were talking to Mr. Kennedy, in that chart, we can, you can trace when the numbers went down during the school building project. We all know families who took their children out and put them in private or parochial. And we also traced Glenn Janet and myself with Leroy and Sheila, we could tell when two private parochial schools in the area opened up a sixth and seventh grade.
Mm-hmm.
And so, the trends, to your point, the addition of full-day kindergarten and free full-day kindergarten, you can also, when you look historically, trace what happened in the community and the surrounding schools.
Mr. Sullivan?
So, just a question about the median sales prices. When you were calculating those, did you take into account the inflation of the time period as years went by?
Say the question again.
So, when you were calculating the median sales price?
Right.
Did you take into account inflation during that time period?
The, we didn't do the calculation. It was done by the Warren Group, that their name is at the bottom, they published something called Banker and Tradesman, and they don't consider inflation, they just take the raw numbers and use the actual numbers from that historical year. So, you're right, it sounds like you've been studying economics, but you, to get a true historical pattern, you'd want to know the value of the dollars, you know, over those years. You're right. But they don't do that. They don't, they just simply record the numbers and then report them the next year, the next year, and use the same data from before. I'm sure they've done some research about it that they haven't published, but, and that would be useful.
So, depending on the period you're talking about, that, that would be a very astute question. In this case, because of the recession and because of federal monetary policy over the last seven or eight years, inflation has been quite low, so probably not as much of the factor as it would be, you know, the periods. So, thanks, Don, this was...
Thank you for giving us the question.
Exactly, exactly what we were hoping for.
And we'll stay in touch and continue to watch the factors, and I'll continue to feed data back and forth with Dr. Gormley and Dr. Gormley.
I want to say a little bit about the process, and Ms. Varela kind of skipped ahead to a possible solution.
Yeah, I know, I know. I appreciate it.
And we've got a responsibility for due diligence. This is the beginning of that due diligence. The process is generate some data, confirm the accuracy of that data, and confirm the accuracy of the conclusions that you might reach based on that data. That's step number one. Step number two is to then sit down with the superintendent, the facility subcommittee, and perhaps outside assistance if we need it, to determine or confirm that we've looked at existing space and any available options there. Step three would be to look within Milton for other available space, and then, after those three steps are concluded, if we don't have a satisfactory answer, then in fact, an alternative might be to recommend building a new facility, which would require an override. But just want to be clear that we have some steps to go through. This is something we're taking very seriously, and I'd like to thank members Varela and Donahue, who have been helping us to focus on this over the last few months. So, this is the beginning, Don. As I said, this is exactly what we were hoping for in terms of data that we can now start to process, we can share with the Milton School community, but also, as Ms. Varela said, the town officials and others who have invested interest in this. So, thanks again. Ms. Everhart?
Can I just ask a quick question about, so just thinking just short-term for next year, in terms of, I know that we've had a wonderful preschool presentation, and many people enrolled already, and just thinking about numbers for next year, when will we have a discussion about, like, I know it won't be for a while, for kindergarten registration and like the number of kindergartens and spe, because I know we're sort of, you know, space were constrained this year with the number of kindergartens we had, so when will we, what will be the process we're thinking about next year, or this coming year, or whatever you want?
So, I asked the superintendent that question last week, and the answer is, one, we're seeing people register earlier for kindergarten, so we're getting most of that information in, whereas previously, we had a lot that happened during the summer. That's not the case. So, we should have a pretty good number in about three or four weeks.
Okay.
Uh, and we'll look at what that means for classes and we'll take it from there. But, so I, I would, I would think probably, uh, mid, mid to late February, we'd be having a discussion about next year.
Okay.
Mr. Sullivan.
Just a question. So if we'll talk about the kindergarten and the numbers, um, how close are we, um, getting to the max capacity of holding the number of students? To the number of students we have now?
If, if, um, if the trends are realized, uh, we're there. We have one possible, possible fallback option, which won't be good because it might mean taking some other space that now has very important use in using that, but we're there. So this isn't theoretical, but, uh, we should be working with the actual numbers. So we'll have those in a few weeks. Okay.
Next Chairman Walker in the school committee, I'd like to invite Dr. Angela Burke to the table. Our technology director, administrator, and Janet Sheen have, uh, in response to a school committee request, the presentation is entitled Web-Based Communication of Educational Technology Strategy Update. Welcome, Dr. Burke.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and bringing your family here tonight. And I appreciate to you and Assistant Superintendent Sheen for the preparation you put into this presentation. And it's a follow-up to a earlier presentation you did.
Exactly. Um, so I, the goal is to hopefully answer some of the questions that have been posed throughout, um, the last few meetings regarding the status of technology, our plan overall, and, um, what we're doing for communication. So.
Dr. Burke, I was just wondering if perhaps, um, um, we should just give the school committee members just an update on our web-based communication numbers, which they requested prior to our presentation.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have electronically up here, but.
Right, alright. So when we last reported on the numbers of teachers who were, um, using web-based communication, um, we, um, we did not have one hundred percent at all of the schools. We did some of the schools. And the reason was that some of our new staff and some of our teachers who had transferred from one school to another were not yet set up with their, um, with their new websites. And, uh, we can report now that one hundred percent of our teachers, um, are meeting expectations for web-based communications. And in this update, um, on the, um, on the reverse side, on the second page, um, we included the, um, expectations. According to the contract, um, the teachers are, um, are around web-based communications. But I would also say that, um, principals report that teachers far exceed the expectations as cited in the, um, in the contract for communicating with parents. And as we, um, as we noted in the last, um, update, that, um, teachers are using a variety of tools and have been encouraged to use a variety of tools until we, um, until we establish, um, our, um, our new, um, student information portals. So, um, the, um, the, the new teacher contract does remove the language of headline and, um, and notes that it's, um, overall any web-based communication tool. So, um, you had also asked for an update on the number of teachers who were posting homework electronically. And, um, teachers are still, um, um, generally, um, using, um, in grades, let's say in grades three through grades eight. Many of the, um, schools and grade levels have purchased agenda books for the purpose of having students record their homework assignments. So, um, there, there is a number here in that we say that one hundred percent of teachers are posting homework, posting homework expectations, but we have two numbers because while all are, um, are posting homework, um, there are different numbers around, um, those who post homework and assignments electronically. So we distinguish between those numbers here. So that, that is the, the most recent.
So just a question on that. First, thank you for this. This is a much better picture than we saw last time. So just explain for me again, so if they're not, if, if it says, for example, um, a hundred percent post homework and twenty percent post electronically, then where, where's the other eighty percent posted?
Well, there, there, it's either posted on, it must be posted on a webpage where there are expectations or guidelines. And it might be more of a general expectation. So there might be spelling words posted for the week. But it may not say every night, this is the math homework pages twenty to twenty-five. Now, the, um, teachers might simply post their homework on the whiteboard in the classroom and the children record that homework in their agenda that they bring home.
Okay.
Would you speak to Mr. Walker's point about the feedback from the principals about these agenda books, which people with children at the elementary and middle school understand?
So, so, right, in the, in the middle school, they're, um, they're, they're used in grade six through eight. And the teachers post the homework and they, the students record them. And that's, it's a, it's a, um, it's to develop good study habits and responsibility. But additionally, there are some teachers who also post the assignment online or electronically. It may not be through headline, it may be through, um, on a link that is on the headline page. The assignments may also be posted on Google Classroom so that students can access those assignments.
Um, I'm just, this is just a comment. I'm kind of, um, I don't know, I guess concerned, uh, about the disparity between twenty percent posting homework electronically at the Glover and eighty percent doing it at the Tucker. There's, it's a huge difference in terms of parents being able to access that homework, given that even with agenda books, kids aren't necessarily, uh, bringing those books home, leaving them in the lockers at school, whatever. And I'm also noticing that, say comparing, I hate to keep harping on the Glover here. I love the Glover. But, um, but that Cunningham has so many methods of use, of posting homework. Google Classroom, Google Drive, Weebly, agenda books, et cetera. And there's only headline and agenda books with, so there's a huge range here. Um, and I, I think I would just like to see more consistency across the board with these things. I mean, there was just a, um, a posting on Milton neighbors about the difficulty of dealing with headline and how hard it is to, it's so not user friendly. And, um, so, so just to have more options there, uh, beyond just, you know, headline and agenda books or, or something like that, so.
Yeah, um, and, and just to speak to this too. And, and the main reason why all homework, I feel, should be posted electronically, like if there can be, um, professional development and, and it, it, that it's mainstreamed is because if, if kids are out sick, it's, it's a huge, um, it's a huge help. I mean, you know, just like being an independent learner, the agenda books are great, teaches them to do that. But, you know, um, you know, the learning, the learning pace is so much faster than it was when we were there. And even starting, I want to say like third grade up, like third grade is the big year. So even in elementary, like third, fourth and fifth, if you're out for a couple of days and, um, you know, it's that kind of thing that, you know, that you either have to start teaching the student or the parent has to email and say, you know, they've got the flu, they've got strep, they got whatever, can you let us know? But if everything was posted electronically, you know, I mean, cause even at that early level, kids stress out about missing school. Middle schoolers stress out, that, that they should actually be staying home and getting better. And sometimes they still want to go to school because they're afraid to miss. And they're afraid that they're going to get behind. But if everything was posted electronically, um, you know, it, it, it would just, it would help them, I think with the anxiety and the, like the emotional part of it, um, of, of knowing that it's always going to be there online. And no matter if you go to the Glover, you go to Cunningham, go to Pierce, I don't know. And I, I'd like you, you three students to speak to that. Do you agree with me with that or not?
Yeah.
From your experiences?
Yeah.
Cause you know, you're the real truth to it, right? Yeah. And was it Congress Summit times when you were out sick and you couldn't get it? And, you know, certain teachers don't post it, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, you have to like try to get a friend to bring it and then have to like come drop it off.
And it's stressful.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So before we leave that, Mr. Walker?
I, I actually, I, I don't want to derail this presentation, so.
And, and the reason.
I, I have some questions too, but we'll, we'll come back to this, but, Dr. Burke, you're on.
Sure. Chairman Walker, may I, may I just add that we just thought, I, I just thought it would be good to present this before this presentation because Dr. Burke will be addressing our goals towards consistent use of the parent portal and administrators' place.
I'll, I'll let you know whether I think that was a good idea or a bad idea in a minute.
Oh, it was my idea, so I'll, I'll, I'll take the blame one way or the other.
Again, I wanted to paint a picture of the entire, um, plan for technology and what we're doing and how we're incorporating it, even though I, I know there were specific questions, but I still, I, I may be giving you information that you didn't ask for, but I just wanted to make sure I, I painted the whole picture so that everyone can say they are aware of what's going on in terms of our digital literacy plan. So, um, you can see for yourself in the italics what the mission is in terms of how we use technology. But I did start with that disclaimer, the sentence that really it's about encouraging and supporting the district mission. So we don't, technology is not an isolated, separate, you know, something we want to do outside of what already has been laid out for district goals. So we really are just a tool for reaching what already is the, the district mission. But with that being said, there are some things that we want to, we wanted to shape of what that actually means and what that looks like, which is why we do have a separate mission. But I want, I want everyone to understand that we really work in tandem with what already is happening in the district. Because there are educational technology standards for learning. We have national standards that we work on, um, especially six through twelve. And then we have Massachusetts Frameworks Digital Literacy Standards, which we're responsible for. The only thing that's a, a little tricky is with six through twelve, we have designated teachers at, um, different levels who specifically teach technology. Whereas K through five, we have one technology instruction specialist for the four schools. And so what she does is very limited. Um, she, we do have a set of standards specifically that she's responsible for teaching, separate from what the classroom teacher teaches. But it's very difficult for one adult to address four schools, K through five, and get to all the digital literacy standards. So we, we utilize Massachusetts Framework for K five. But six, twelve, because we have a lot more flexibility, we're able to reach national standards as well. Um, so just to frame what our, part of our mission is to ensure that all classrooms, I'm sorry, I'm just moving it here and not there.
You don't mean to move it?
Totally, yeah. No, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm forgetting that you guys are watching with me. You're not looking at my, my iPad. So we do want to make sure that all of our classrooms have modern hardware, um, whiteboards. And not all, but access to document cameras, Chromebooks, iPads, student responses. Just, that's part of the mission is to just make sure that those devices and those different equipments are available to all classrooms pre-K through twelve. The, the reason we give them as a means for helping manage the classroom overall. So examples of that are having the whiteboards for engaging lessons, um, a place for teachers to have a repository for lesson plans, different software that can create tests, electronic grade books. We just, we oversee just kind of the plethora of what can be used to help manage the classroom in an electronic way. The other important task of, uh, technology is making sure that there is strong communication with families, which is, I know, something that has been on the topic of discussion. And as you know, right now, we're in a transitional period because we are moving away from headline. Um, when I say moving away, it, it wasn't just a, a immediate jump because that has been the one consistent district-wide tool that was used by everyone. While we have slowly tried to introduce a variety of tools and allow folks to try things out, we did want to keep the one consistent for now until we completely transfer over into a consistent, um, platform, which I will, um, speak more to later on. But right now, headline is still on the agenda, meaning teachers still post there since that's the one thing that parents know to check. However, we have been encouraging the use of other platforms for teachers. So we hope to utilize Reddicker, which you may be familiar with. It's our student information system. So that platform would be one-stop shopping. Our student information system lives there. Our grade books will live there. And then they have a platform called Parent Portals, which I'll tell you a little bit more about. And the nice thing about it is because it's the same system, it speaks to each other. Meaning right now, when you have a third-party system like headline, we do our best to feed information from the student information system into headline, but there are hiccups along the way and they don't always speak to each other smoothly. When we put everything within the same system, then information that's put into the student information system by, if a, if a child moves in or someone changes their phone number and it's put into the system, it automatically speaks to the other platform, so it's updated. Whereas now, a change could be made at the front desk and teachers don't necessarily see that reflected on their class lists or, um, information that they're trying to access because there's a, a middle man that has to transfer the information from one system to the other. So we are trying to eliminate that by keeping everything within the Reddicker platform. So we're doing that in phases. We have already started at the high school with a small pilot of twenty-five teachers trying the grade book out, which started, um, at the end of the summer. We had folks come in before the school year started to get trained on it and get going. Those twenty-five people have given positive feedback about the new grade book. So this January, on January eleventh during our half-day, we got the other seventy folks at the high school up and running. And so as of this marking period, everyone at the high school will be utilizing the online grade book through Reddicker. That's a nice step because then once we get them comfortable with the grade book, then we can move on to using the parent portal. We continue to work with the union to see what a feasible rollout and timeline is from making sure everyone's comfortable with the new expectations. So we are all set with the high school in terms of everyone by the end of the school year being on the platform. And next year, we'll push it out to the Pierce Middle School. And we are still working with, um, that union rep to figure out whether it's a pilot or if because the high school piloted it for us, we can just jump full in with Pierce in, um, September. So the, the portals, the portals that I'm talking about. So the, there's two portals that exist. We, and actually really three. We call them the teacher portal, the parent portal and the student portal. It's all the same portal. The reason it's, it has three different terms is one is where the teacher logs in and can post things. So it's a nice marriage between the things you may or may not have liked about headline, the things you like about Google Classroom, um, and the online grade book. It's one-stop shopping where as a parent, you log in. When you get in, if you have three children in the district, you'll see your three children on one page. You can click a child's name and within that, you'll be able to see, yeah, at high school level, it will show all the classes that they take. At the elementary level, it's typically just one class that would be listed. And within that class, the teacher can post homework, publish the grade book. So high school students right now, your progress reports are pushed through headline. If you're familiar, if you have teachers who do that, they, they share it through headline. Right now, it would be, they could push it to, directly to the portal and it would live there. So it would be elimination of having to print out report cards. You can go online and check things. It is something that the teachers have to decide to share. Meaning just because parents have logins, doesn't mean that as soon as you log in, you have access to a grade book. A teacher keeps a grade book and they choose when they're ready to publish it so that parents have access to it. But still, it's that ease of knowing that, that one place you go will have all of the information that you've been kind of searching for in other venues. So, um, it's a nice, I just, uh, you know, interactive web portal that enables us because administrators have ways to push out notifications as well too. So not that we're looking to replace things, but we could send out if there was, and something going on. So, not that we're looking to replace things, but we could send out if there was something going on in a, in the school, a play, or we wanted you to know about information, like right now, we do those robocalls, and those are nice, but we can also send notifications through the portal, and you can opt to have an email sent directly to you when a new notification has been sent. So, we can, it also allows us to, you can check to see if your children are tardy for school, the absences, because it's all, it's the student information system, so everything is, is there. So, this is again, just some of the key features about why it's nice. I'll let you look at it, but just dropping to the bottom, because it's, you can get it anywhere, it's on, it's available on any platform. You can have it on your phone, you can look at it on the computer, but it's very convenient, it's a very versatile portal. I mentioned the Alert Now, the robocalls, those things will still exist, and we're not looking to get rid of them, but just knowing the potential that this one platform could serve for us is very extremely helpful to, to think of, the things that we use now being one, one place of finding it on. So, I talked a little bit about this Google Classroom. I, I had the pleasure of watching, I think it was last month or November's school committee meeting, I can't remember, and Google Classroom was brought up as a possible platform to use for web-based communication with families. So, I just wanted to spend a quick second, not too long, just kind of giving the info on what it is and what it's not, just so that we're informed. Because we still want to continue to use it, it's a great resource for teachers. But what it is, is it's a classroom management tool designed to be a relationship between teacher and student, not teacher and parent. It's an intimate relationship where the teacher posts homework and assignments, and students log in and complete those assignments right there in the moment. They don't have to print anything, they don't have to send it to her. Once they log in and complete an assignment, the teacher can give real-time feedback. If any of you are familiar with using Google Docs and collaborating with your peers and being able to work on a document at the same time, it's a similar fashion, where the teacher can give an assignment, see where the child is. So, the assignment might not be due until Friday, but if the teacher logs in and sees that the child has started it, but they might not be on the right road, she can provide that feedback and have a teachable moment of saying, "I see where you're going with this, but can you reread the article and try to think of more examples?" And just, and have that online relationship with them. So, while I know on the student side, they think, "This is great, I like this," it, it's not something that we would, we can then give parents logins and say, "Join the classroom." It really is, it's the classroom at home for the student. Now, at the elementary age, those, because we start giving out Google accounts at second grade, of course, you can, as a elementary parent, take that child's username and password and log in with them, and it's probably a joint effort. But honestly, by the time it's middle and high school, it really is that intimate relationship between the teacher and the, the parent, um, the teacher and the student, I'm sorry. So, I did just want to make sure that everyone understood what it can, cannot do, and I actually have, and I'll just get to, if you're interested at all, because it is a very nice resource, and we're getting more and more teachers on board with it every day utilizing this, so you will hear more of it. But it's not replacing any communication that we have lined up for teacher to families. So, going back, I mentioned we give Google accounts to all of our second, starting at second grade through twelfth grade. And it is, we are, our district used to be called, if you're familiar with it, Google Apps for Education, is now called G Suite, and we are a G Suite district, which means we get those accounts for all of our students and our teachers, all staff. And we have trained our staff in using, at, starting with just Google Drive and Google Docs. So, that, that has become now our method for sharing documents internally. So, any data, any documents that should be considered secure are now being sent via Google Drive, Google Doc. The one thing that I know may frustrate parents about that is it's a locked system. It's a domain meant to only for those who have MiltonPS.org email addresses, because it's, that was the point, we did that on purpose, to make it a safe place where things shared within that domain stay within that domain. So, you can't accidentally send something to someone that may not be for their eyes or viewing. So, we have access to everything in the G Suite, which includes forms, sheets, sites. If you're familiar with Google at all, then you're, you're familiar with what they have available to us. But it's, as an educational institution, it comes to us for free, so teachers get accounts with unlimited storage and access to all of these things. As of right now, we haven't trained them in all of them, but we have trained them in docs and in, and just using the drive system. We have turned the Gmail feature off for everyone, including adults, but mostly, we were concerned about children. We didn't want them to necessarily be using it for external communication, and it really is an educational tool, so they don't use the mail feature. So, one other thing I wanted to give you a glimpse of, I know you can't access the link, but I did, it was for me to be able to pull it up. This is an internal document that we use, and Glenn, it's the first tab, that outlines, as I mentioned, in K through five, because we have one person responsible for digital literacy, what we've done is pulled out within our English Language Arts Framework, the Common Core and the Massachusetts State Framework, there are standards that the classroom teachers are responsible for embedding in their instruction on a regular basis. So, what this document does is highlight what those technology expectations are of the classroom teacher. So, you'll see in the far column is just the grade level, and even at kindergarten level, there are, there's something, but there's not a lot. And what the standard is, and then I've put in the entire standard, but I just tried to highlight so you can get a sense of what the technology piece is. So, I'll just do one example. At the kindergarten level, they're asked to just produce and publish writing with peers. That could be on, and you see the column with examples, our technology instruction specialist has, uses an app on the iPad called My Story, where kindergarten students can orally tell a story, draw pictures, and then create little books that they share with each other, and it can be done in collaboration. So, they're using the iPad as the digital tool to produce writing, per se. And so, that goes, it, the document, this document exists for K five, again, because it's a, it's a different realm, whereas our instructional technology specialist can't be responsible for teaching all of it within the small time that she gets K through five for four schools. So, we do put the onus on the classroom teachers for making sure that they are meeting these standards. So, you'll see in the next tab, the, that, the, the very next tab, Glenn, is that it exists for everyone, so if you could actually just scroll down for me of this page. So, this is the same document that we share with everyone, K twelve, because again, our, our philosophy is that vertical alignment. The sixth-grade teacher should know what the fifth-grade teachers have done, so that they know what they're coming up with. The seventh-grade teachers should know what eighth graders need to know and be able to do, so that they can prepare and see what, what the depth is of how they should be learning. So, this one looks a little drier, because this is for everyone, K through twelve, and we didn't have to put the examples in of what, what they have to do. But, and if you keep scrolling just a little more, you'll see that when you get into, so the, yep, keep going, there's a lot more for the, for six through twelve than there exists for K through five standards. But again, those standards are being met because we have specific technology teachers at both the Pierce and the high school that are just teaching these things on a regular basis. All right, if you can go back to the PowerPoint. Thank you. The, I, I don't want to bore you with this, but this is just another thing that we're responsible for in terms of technology. So, I outlined that there are Massachusetts Framework standards for digital literacy. There are standards that are embedded in our ELA frameworks, and then there are those computer-based assessment skills that students need to be prepared for, previously PARC, currently Next Generation, M-CAS two point oh. So, this document highlights all of the skills that students will need in order to navigate a computer-based assessment, and that's another thing that we incorporate into what we're already doing in terms of teaching technology. And what we've done so far with our staff is we have done some large group training, but what happens on a regular basis is small-group individual support for classroom teachers to make sure that they understand how to use the tools that we have available to us. So, we also are a member of an online professional development organization called TEQ, which we currently have one hundred staff members enrolled in. And what that is, is it's online individualized PD, where teachers can go in and choose what they need to know based on what they want to grow in. And so, those hundred people will continue for the year, and we hope to use those folks as seeds in their class, in their schools, to help grow this, this movement of getting more folks more involved. Because while we're setting some expectations of what we expect teachers to know and be doing, we of course want them to exceed those expectations and try new things and be more exploratory with technology in their classroom. And so, having those folks who, at the ground level, are using these things and are being the pioneers of it are helpful. And so, next year, we'll hope to cycle in a different hundred set of folks onto this platform and get them up and running and trained in uses of technology. We also have our own in-house experts, so sometimes it's the folks who teach technology, so, you know, either the middle school or high school teacher or our instructional technology specialist at the elementary level, who offer PD. You know, twice a year, we do the PD strands, where we offer teachers stipends to share their own expertise. We always have quite a variety of technology-related PDs on this lineup. I know this year, we are offering just how to use a variety of G Suite. We have Google Classroom always on the agenda, because there's always new folks who want to jump on board with that. We have use of various apps. There's always something being offered, so that people can continue to develop their use of tools. Also, we have invested in a variety of software and tools that have online components. So, one of the things our digital literacy team has come up with is putting together expectations for frequency of use of the tools. So, we're not introducing new things, we're not trying to overwhelm teachers and say, "Try these new things." But looking at, an example is our math curriculum for elementary, everyday math, there is an online component. Some of the teachers play the games with hands-on material, but there are electronic versions, online versions of some of the same math games. So, we're trying to encourage teachers to start utilizing those tools online more often, while hands-on is still fabulous, and I wouldn't give that up for the world. We just want to expose them to what we already have available to us. Some of the other things are Study Island, Boomwriter, Keep Boarding Without Tears, all things that we've always had available to us, but sometimes folks opt to do the non-device-dependent version of it. So, now we are encouraging them to incorporate the devices. But I do want to plug here where our, our struggle has been, which is, if I could just paint the scenario, if you are a classroom teacher, and I have come around and showed you how to use these tools, and you're excited about it, and you want to do it, and you want to get your kids on the Chromebooks in order to play these math games, but you share a cart with three other teachers, then you might do it on Monday at one o'clock, when you've reserved the Chromebooks, but you might not be able to do it again on Tuesday and Wednesday, because now you have to let the other teachers use the Chromebooks for something they're doing. So, we do struggle with a consistent, frequent use of the materials. I will say, they are being used. Whenever I go in the schools, the Chromebook carts are always in rotation, folks are using them feverishly. However, it's really hard to plan for and depend on using them regularly when they're shared amongst. I mean, we have done a really good job of increasing the number of devices, so now we're up to probably about a cart per grade level, which is great. But if you have a school with four to five sections of a grade, that's really tough still to plan for that frequent use of. And one of the things we continue to try to stress is, we want a natural embedded integration of technology. We don't want it to be where, once or twice a week, you sign up for the cart, and it becomes this taboo, "Ooh, we got the Chromebooks in the room," and you use them for the one period, and then they disappear. It really needs to be a natural part of just what we do, just at this time of day, you pull them out, maybe four kids are on them at once, and the other kids are doing something else, but we just want it to be naturally embedded. But it's really hard to do that without having enough devices to say, "You don't have to worry whether or not someone else is going to be using them. These belong here, and you can always have them." So, I just want to get that little plug. So, the list I was speaking of earlier, this is just kind of, these are the things that already exist, teachers have always had this. But now, can we get them regularly using the devices for these things? And the other last plug was just about the instructional technology specialist, which I think I've, I've said a few times, but I'll reiterate. One person for four schools, K through five, we struggle. There's, there's a lot that we want to do, and it's not ju, right now, we put her focus on teaching digital literacy, digital citizenship, online safety, proper use of technology. That itself takes up quite a lot of her time. Then we try to, around this time of year, we start thinking about the computer-based assessment, PARC, M-Class, and having her help get children ready for that. It leaves very little room for that creativity and for her to be able to have fun lessons, where she's extending what's happening in the classroom into something with technology. So, that's another area where we really would like some support with being able to have another designated person that can at least share between two schools, because right now, it's, she's spread thin. She maybe sees folks for about thirty minutes every other week, and just, we just, I don't feel that it's quality instruction when it's so short. I mean, she's, she's doing a good job, and we do our best, we plan together all the time for that, but it's really hard when it's short. And most of the time, you're, you know, it's at least five minutes to get the Chromebooks out, set them up, log on, and then pack them up and put them away for the next class, so, just food for thought. And then I just wanted to explain also with how the technology supports for IT work in the building. It's a different beast from the instructional technology, but the actual informational technology. Whereas right now, we have the two technicians who support the six schools. We do have a pretty decent system where teachers can, online, put in a help ticket, let them know what the problem is, and we try to troubleshoot things on an as-need basis, but really, we have to prioritize, we have to make those tough calls, where when it's someone who is in an office having trouble printing versus a teacher who's in the classroom with twenty-four kids in front of her and can't open up her smartboard to show the lesson she planned for, then we, we run there. But then we end up falling short in other places, so it's, it's, it's been tough to maintain that as well, too. But that's the, the system that we've been utilizing so far. So, our next steps, we have created a digital learning team, which continues to meet and make recommendations, which I've kind of plugged some of those in. Our, our recommendations thus far have been about the acquisition of more devices and to petition for more support, especially at the elementary level, for another instructional technology support person. And then we really want to solidify the rollout for the portals, because we've, we've done a nice job of piloting the grade book, and we feel successful with that. But we want to continue to work with the union on what is a feasible rollout of the parent portals that I described to you a little earlier. And then that other piece we talked about is, while we want to put clear expectations on how often teachers are using the tools, we want to make sure we can support that with giving them more of the tools, so that they don't feel like we're asking them to do something without giving them the resource to do so. Questions?
Dr. Craig.
I heard you loud and clear on what you need. My question is about the rollout, because you've got the, let me see, this is, I should have- have, I should have bookmarked it. Anyway, you've got the pilots set up for high school and middle school. I didn't see elementary school on there, so that was one question.
Okay.
And I know you said you need to work with the union in terms of what would be a feasible rollout, but I'd just like to hear from you when you think it might be possible to get all of this up.
So, the first part, the elementary isn't on there right now because the plan we're rolling out is the grade book. And as you're aware, the elementary just adopted new standards-based support cards, which is great, but we also purchased an online platform to produce those standards-based support cards. So, we're not in a rush to change that, that we've already gone, that is the change for them. So, that's where we're going to remain consistent right now. And my opinion of a feasible rollout is, now that the high school has gotten the grade book down and the entire school will have had this school year with it, I would like to see the high school try the parent portals in September of two thousand seventeen, and then let Pierce get their feet wet with the grade book, and then follow suit behind that with adding the parent portal piece in.
And when would you expect the, excuse me, the elementary schools to go up for the parent portal, or is that not in the plan?
No, it, it definitely is. We just, we focused a lot of our energy on the standards-based support card and that electronic platform, because it was brand-new. And that, too, is a, it's a third-party platform. That's not from the Rediker, their, their platform. So, we were working with those, that company and getting that up and running. So, we just haven't put elementary on the radar for any new changes because of what they've, they're, they're currently going through in terms of a lot of new additions and initiatives that have been specific to elementary that the middle and high haven't gone through.
All right. Thank you.
But it's not, it's not a lost conversation by any means. It just, we, I, we want to make sure that we, we jump in full force with them and then make sure that it'll, it'll be easier because we'll have that role model. We'll have in-district folks who can say, "I use it. It works," and then it'll be much easier to sell it to them.
Ms. Varela.
So, so the example that you had early on about the portal and, I mean, it seems fabulous, if we can do the one-stop shopping that you spoke to. So, realistically, are you saying that, that really won't be in play in the district until two thousand nineteen?
So, again, we are ready, from a technological standpoint. We have to work with those union reps to figure out what makes sense and what's, what, what they consider feasible in terms of what we put on the teachers' plates, because that, it's not about just turning it on. We turn it on, but then we have to set guidelines for what's the expectation of what they're putting up there, the frequency of how often they're updating it. And so, those are the conversations that will dictate when it goes live. But with, there isn't a, there isn't anything holding us back from turning them on and getting ready, because we own the platform already. So...
And in the interim, that means that good old Edline will still be cranking out the elementary schools for like the next two years, give or take?
Um, I don't, honest, I don't like to think that that's the case, but unfortunately, that one piece is out of my control in terms of when, when they say it's okay to ask teachers to do this, because right now, they're still living with the, the written guidelines of, we just post, you know, I think you have it in the web-based communication, there's a, there's a very clear outline for what they need to do. And so, to change that, would have to go through that tunnel. It's not, it's not a to- it's not something I can say, "Now, I want you all to be doing this," without having that conversation with them and them changing the language that exists that prohibits me from moving forward.
Can I follow up with a question?
Yeah.
So, Mary and Janet and Glenn, can you speak to me? I, I'll, I'll admit, I, I was never aware that this has to be a, a union thing, because it's like, we teach everyday math and you're a math teacher. So, this is Milton, and this is the curriculum we use, so you got to learn to use it and you teach it, or we teach second step. So, if, if, I mean, it's two thousand sixteen, right, no, two thousand seventeen, right? So, two thousand seventeen. So, if, if we're going to use this portal as our, our form of communication, I mean, is this across the state that every district needs to negotiate with their teachers about, about when they'll agree to use a new portal? Like, can you walk me through that? Because I am totally oblivious to that. It's just bizarre to me.
Janet, do you want to start and then I'll pick up?
No.
Well, I know that there's been language in the contract for a number of years on expectations for web-based communication. And so, it's my understanding that if we make any changes around those expectations, they would need to be negotiated.
And so, I want to say with Janet Sheen's leadership and Dr. Angela Burke and all the administrators, this pilot at the high school has run fabulously. And in my meetings with the union, to your point, Member Varela, the transition and the implementation is moving fast, and it, the meetings are very positive. And again, I don't want to put Dr. Burke on the spot, Assistant Superintendent Sheen, they're explaining to you that it's in the contract, but our teachers, because of Angela Burke and Assistant Principal Ben Kelly's leadership in developing teacher leaders, the movement is, it's moving very, very quickly. I think even faster than Dr. Burke's giving her credit at Pierce School. So, I could sit here and tell you, the implementation has been slow, we've met a lot of resistance, but I have to tell you, on behalf of the Milton Public School teachers, the implementation has gone phenomenally, and it's, it's moving very, very quickly. Faster than I think Dr. Burke, but she can't speak for negotiations, Member Varela.
Right, right.
And I could sit here and tell you, it's been a slow implementation. We've hit a lot of bumps. It's, you've done, you and Ben Kelly have done a phenomenal job, and they're integrating Pierce people, and from my meetings that I had this week, they're looking for an implementation there, too.
To echo that, I, I do feel confident that the, the teaching staff have all been extremely open-minded to it. They love it. They're, they're asking, "When's the next ..." So, they've heard it because I plug it in every time I talk to them. They're like, "Well, when, when is that parent portal coming on?" So, I just feel hesitant, because again, there isn't a delay on our end. We, we can do this whenever the green light goes on. But there is just that, that one piece that is a little out of my realm. But the teachers are definitely receptive to it and they're excited. On January eleventh, when we trained the rest of the high school, we invited six Pierce staff to come up and be trained as well, just so that they can go back and plant those seeds. Just even hearing someone say like, "Oh, I saw this new grade book." So, it, it, we're in motion and we're ready to go as soon as it's a go.
And we've already targeted one of the two half-day professional development days at Pierce. And, and both administrative teams are coming with proposals to us when their teachers feel ready.
Just make a...
Ms. Everhart, let me just make an editorial comment about that. I, I think that we probably ought to schedule some time in executive session to talk about collective bargaining strategy regarding this matter, because the, the, the pace with which we're moving does not match up with the rosy picture that you've painted, or the projected year by which we'll have this all done, which sounds like two thousand twenty at this point. So, and why don't we, and, and, Dr. Burke, are you in the union?
Am I what?
Are you in the union?
No, I'm not. I don't know. Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Administrator.
Unit B, yes. Sorry.
Okay. We, we should schedule that for the meeting on the eighteenth. Ms. Everhart.
So, I just want to say that every time we have one of these presentations, my mind wants to explode. Not in a bad way. It's just a lot of, I'm amazed at all the things that you're expected to do and the teachers are expected to do. So, just a few comments. So, I, just to go back to the conversation we were having about agenda books, I'm, I'm an old parent compared to a lot of people sitting at the table, and I, I see the value in agenda books. And you know, a, a pen and a pencil is a piece of technology, too. It's just not as advanced. So, I think that encouraging students to continue to write things down and process information in that way is extremely important, and continuing to use agenda books and to continue to encourage students to maintain those skills as the world advances in other ways is very important. Coming from an early childhood perspective, thinking about the instant gratification of technology, the ways that that develops the brain, all of those things impact future learning. So, encouraging students to still write things down, use agenda books, is a very important piece of education. I think that the one thing I'm taking away from every one of these presentations is the struggle that parents have understanding what homework is for their students, if it's only in an agenda book, and if their children are struggling with executive function skills, with self-regulation skills. I mean, I think that's where this all started. I wasn't on the school committee the very first time that you all talked about this, but I think finding some way to address that issue to help those parents who are trying to help their struggling students just have access to the information to provide that scaffolding and support at home is really the, the issue. I don't, whether or not the high school teachers communicate with me, I try very hard not to go that way, right? Because those steps need to go back for a high school parent, not forward. But in elementary school, you're still in the scaffolding piece. So, that's, every single time we have one of these presentations, that piece still gets lost. How are we helping parents access information, particularly for students who struggle to get that information home? And that's, that's really what it boils down to. It's wonderful to have all these things, but I think that that piece, particularly if you're not going to roll these parent portals out of elementary school for a while, and Edline is a frustrating tool, how can we support parents in that way? And that's what I'm taking away from the, the multiple presentations we've had now. I, I believe fully in making students independent. I am, that's a, that's an ultimate goal for all students, but I just think that piece needs to be addressed somehow for parents. That's my editorial comment as an old parent.
Dr. Donahue.
So, thank you again for the, the presentation. Building on that, I would say you have a, you have a very difficult job, because as I, as I think of what you're doing with technology, there's sort of the front-end communication with the parents, there's the classroom piece, and then there's the back-end with the administrators discussing the educational curriculum with the teachers and the teachers amongst themselves, and it's sort of the horizontal and vertical integration there. And I, I will tell you again, based on the feedback that, and based on your presentation, those, those latter two processes seem to be firing on all cylinders, or if not most cylinders. It's the, it's the format, it's, it's the communication with the parents, it's the front-end communication that, that we seem to be having issues with. So, kudos in the other parts, but you know, I'm not saying anything that's been said before. We, we need to work on the front-end aspect, because oversimplifying to an extent, but as a parent, you sit down and your, your two concerns where it comes to technology are, whatever kids' grades and what's the homework for tonight. And, you know, I would say at the elementary level, in particular, your concern about your child's grades are, 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 they're important, but on a night-to-night basis, you're, you're thinking about what's the homework for tonight, because you know, we're a standards-based, you know, assessment system, and you know, you might not know where they are, where they sit in, in math or English, because they may not have been assessed in a couple of weeks, and, and that's par for the course. Whereas at the high school level, you know, you'd sort of expect, you know, a more regular assessment and, and have more regular access to those grades. So, when, when you, when you frustrate people on, on the front-end, they don't see your successes in the classroom and at, and on the back-end, so you're sort of losing the battle. And, and I'll use a personal analogy. I drive a Ford, and the Blinker is terrible. I, I hate the Blinker. So, I'm, I'm probably not going to buy another Ford, because I, I spend an hour, two hours a day in the car commuting and changing lanes, and it's, it's maddening, because the Blinker doesn't work the way a Blinker should. But, you know, and I get my wife's car and it's not a Ford, it's Chrysler, and, and I, I dislike the interface so much more, but I, I'd be willing to, to go for that because of this, of this one frustrating facet. So, I don't, I don't want your hard work in the classroom and on the back-end with the tremendous work you're doing to, to be frustrated by, by parents' inability to sort of get what they need, which, which isn't necessarily what you need and we need to teach them, but it's what they need as parents. So, we, we need to, we really need to be in tune to that need that they have that we have, and to sort of move this, move that part of the ball along.
And I appreciate hearing that, and I actually, I completely understand the struggle, because I'm a parent myself, and I want to know exactly what's going on in my son's classroom. But I can share that, that conversation happens across disciplines. It's not a technology issue. We definitely want to help provide a platform for how the communication happens, but we have conversations with curriculum coordinators and principals about just what does it mean to communicate to families? What are you communicating? And what's the best way of doing it outside of the tool? Not, not just what, what platform are you putting on? What website does it go on? But how do you gather information and share with a parent where they are? So, one of the things I'm proud of that came out of that conversation is the standards-based support card, is now it's a much more in-depth communication tool that says, "Here's exactly what your child can and cannot do." But then, we also have to take the step of talking about when it comes to homework. If we're asking teachers to be very mindful about giving homework and making sure it's reflective of learning that happened that day, and we're adapting things continuously, because you teach a lesson, you realize at the end, they didn't get that, are you still going to give that homework that reinforces the skill that they didn't get? Or are you going to revamp and give something that is scaffolded, that actually is going to help them get the, the skill before that to get to the next skill? Those are the kind of things we're asking teachers to be mindful of and think. So, then we have to plan for, what does that look like in terms of giving parents the message? If on Monday, you thought you were going to give worksheet two-point-two, but then after lesson two-point-two, they weren't ready for it, but you, you posted on Monday, but then you want to take it, like, it's just these, these messy conversations. We want it to be, homework should be extremely meaningful. We don't want to be at a place where we're just giving out worksheets, where kids are just, "Here's your homework, because it's your homework." It really should be, is this a practice skill, something that we've just done in the classroom? And so, that's where a little bit of the holdup becomes, and that's why that conversation in terms of what are teachers expected to do, because it's real-time. You can't be a teacher who in September posts your homework for the year, or even the month. You can't say, "Here's the assignments to look forward to and be prepared." I hope that every day, you're making a decision about what makes sense to go home and what students practice based on what happened that day. So, that is a little bit of an expectation of the teachers in terms of the frequency of how often they're doing and, and posting things. And then, on top of that, we want it differentiated, right? We don't want everybody getting the exact same thing just because that's what we wanted to put on the website, because it was easy. We want you to get what you need and for you to get what you need, and that's going to look a little different. So, that's what we're trying to figure out of, how do we put that expectation on teachers? And what does that look like? And then, it's very easy for me to provide a platform of, here's, here's the, the website to put it on. That's, that's the least of the concern at this point. It's really, how are we asking teachers to manage that and make it meaningful and relevant to what we're asking them to do every day in the classroom? So, but those conversations are happening, though, it's, it's just we're not there yet.
So, if we try to reduce this discussion to its simplest form, we actually go back to the point that, let me see, that Dr. Craig had made, Ms. Everhart made, Dr. Donahue made, and Ms. Varela made, which is, how do we communicate with parents electronically now? That's, that's the discussion in the simplest form. And, and, and I, as Dr. Donahue so eloquently stated, I, I think the, the digital technology picture is actually very promising, but we can't have a school where only twenty percent of teachers are communicating electronically versus one where eighty percent of teachers are communicating electronically. This is not rocket science. And if, and if this is a collective bargaining problem, then we better solve it right away. Because for those of us who have been here, and I've been here the longest, Ms. Bagley-Jones is not here, we've been having this discussion for three years. So, I'm really done with hearing about expectations. So, the question that I would like, the question that the school committee would like answered is, how do we get to a hundred percent electronic communication with parents now? And thank you for all this other information. I think it's great. I do have, actually, I do have a couple of questions on your presentation, but I want to, that, I want to start with that and I want to end with that. That's the question that... That's the question that the school committee would like answered. So we can, we don't want any more presentations, we don't want any more handouts. That's the simple question we want answered. Let's say February 18th. So my detailed questions, the, the standards-based platform, does that allow parents' electronic access?
So that's the, you're talking about K through five, the new report card?
K through five, the, the third-party platform that we bought.
So no, the electronic pieces where teachers import the grades, we still print and give paper copies of those.
So the, unlike the high school tool, there's no way for them to access that information electronically?
There is a way and there was a lot of conversation with principals and curriculum coordinators of which route we're going to go in terms of emailing it or printing it. And the consensus was there was still a lot of parents who were looking for hard copy papers of report cards and so that's what we continue to do for this first time.
Okay.
But there is the, the capacity for them to be emailed.
Okay. And the, the second question is about security and this applies to, to both platforms. We've all seen the news reports about sophisticated students who are able to hack into systems and change their grades and so forth. So how's the security on the standards-based platform? How is it on the, the high school tool?
The standards-based platform, we don't worry about so much only because the, that particular audience, the K through five, they don't have access to the, the website because it's not an online, it's not a web portal. Teachers have to download software and put it on their individual computers, which we've done to all the computers that they utilize. And we've even done it for some of the teachers' personal computers so they can do grades at home, obviously. But it's not something you can log into google.com and go to and, and play with. So that, that within itself is the built-in security. And in terms of the six through 12 grade book, I would say the same type of security exists just based on the fact that it's not a link or a, I'm sorry, it is a link. It's not a web, it's cloud-based, meaning teachers can access it at home or at school, but only with a secure link that I send them with a pre-generated password. So when they forget their passwords, I have to send a pre-generated one directly from the system. So students don't have access to the, the grade book itself to even be able to log in. So when we do get to the point where we're having parent portals and student portals, yes, students will have logins to the portal, but they are two different sites. Meaning if you have, you know, www dot gradebook and www dot parent portal, they're just two completely different things. What happens is they speak to each other. So the teacher while in the gradebook can push it to the portal so the parents can see it, but the, the parent, the, the students are only logging in to the portal to be able to see their classes. They don't have access to the gradebook in any way whatsoever.
Great. Then my final question, which is not really a question, is, so the reason you do a pilot is because you want to do a smaller scale implementation where you can troubleshoot, where you can get lessons learned? And, and it sounds like we did that at the high school, it worked fabulously well. We're really excited about that.
Yes, which is why we don't feel we need to pilot at Pierce and we should just in September.
That was precisely my question.
That's, you know, and I'm, I'm completely on board.
So why, why are we piloting it? Why are we piloting it at Pierce? This may not be a question for you.
And, and it, and it's not a definite. I've asked, I've spoken to the union rep there and she's, she actually, the union rep at Pierce is using the gradebook. She has been a part of the high school so that she can see exactly its use and be able to speak to its ease of use. So I'm hoping to hear back that it's a go because we feel that we ironed out the kinks. We know what needs to be done. A lot of good feedback came from teachers and the nice thing is when they reached out to us and said, I like it, but it would be nice if it could do this. We contact Rediker and we asked them and either it existed already and we just didn't know it, or they make it exist for us. They're like, okay, now you can do this. So we, that was kind of the point of the pilot is to figure out, can it do everything we want it to do? But sometimes you don't know what you want it to do until you're in it, using it. So we feel pretty confident that it's now at the point where it does the things that at least what the high school teachers want and should be similar at the, the Pierce Middle School. So we are prepared to, in August, spend some time getting them up and running and letting it be the go for September. That's an option, it's, it's ready.
And the good news story is I've already targeted the April PD day at Pierce.
Great. So would you, would you keep the school committee informed?
Absolutely.
If, if the answer is not that we can go full-scale with the Pierce in September?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. That was quite a bit of information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. Next on the agenda, it's that time of year and I would ask you, an incorrect copy was sent to you. If you would look in your packet at the 2017-18 school year calendar, and this is a responsibility of the school committee to vote this calendar. So again, I want to compliment Charlene Roach, who spends a tremendous amount of time, and then all our administrators who examine the calendar. We have tried to think about teaching and learning and the placement of our full professional development days, our half-professional development days, looking at months, where the break is, thinking about families, and we're putting this calendar in front of you. If you have any questions for me, don't hesitate. And you, I would bring your attention, you might remember discussions in prior years that I've met with the Milton Interclergy Association and in the Milton Public Schools. If Rosh Hashanah, if Yom Kippur is on a weekday, we have Yom Kippur off, and if Yom Kippur is on a weekend, then we have the first day of Rosh Hashanah.
I just have a very quick question about Rosh Hashanah. Was this confirmed to be the first full day of Rosh Hashanah? It's not the evening before, was, I mean, have you spoken to the rabbi about that day? Just want to confirm that.
Yeah, the rabbi was in contact with Ms. Roach.
Great, thank you.
Maybe in Mr. Walker's absence, could you ask for a vote on this?
I would be happy to.
Fabian for me to direct the meeting.
Well, I, that was, you read my mind. My question was, would you like a vote on this tonight?
Please, please. Parents are calling wanting to make their plans and reservations.
So I will, I'll, I'll move acceptance of this schedule for our 2017-2018 school year.
Second.
All in favor? unanimous?
Thank you.
4-0.
And in closing, my first, excuse me, oh, I skipped over, you know what? I, oh, you're, this is just going to be a handout, very briefly. My apologies, Assistant Superintendent Sheen. This was from the meeting that I was absent. There was a request for curriculum strategies for addressing prejudice and insensitivity. So Assistant Superintendent Sheen worked extensively with the administrators at every level and she has a handout for you, not a PowerPoint presentation tonight, but a handout for you. This was a request that you made at a meeting that I wasn't at.
Oh, are you going to talk about it, Janet?
Well, I, I just, I just wanted to point out that the, the principals and coordinators and department heads, we all met and they all looked at, with their principals, examples of curriculum and programs that are in place in the schools in pre-K to 12 that provide opportunities to, to, you know, teach tolerance and concepts around anti-bias and prejudice. So we, we came up with a good number of things in, in K through 12 and you can see examples here, I won't read them to you, but these are, you know, parts of the, of the curriculum and what we thought were good examples of that. Additionally, on the last page of this handout, you'll see where it says next steps. And here, there are a number of initiatives that have been put in place at the middle school that, in, actually in response to, to some, some recent events that have come up. So we also included the peer leadership program at the high school. And then in pre-K to five, we have ongoing opportunities for students to learn about, again, tolerance and, and prejudice, just through curriculum enrichment programs and events like One Book One School where the, the topic and themes are around understanding differences. And finally, I also included as a handout, the updated revised executive summary from the culturally, Cultural Competency Committee. And we believe that this initiative is going to not only impact student achievement ultimately, but we also believe that some of these, these efforts for our teaching staff to be more culturally proficient will impact students' understanding of differences. So in addition to some of the initial PD that was offered in the district, we most recently, just actually today, finished a, a book club. Twenty-three teachers participated in PD around a study group on Blind Spot. We've also had an additional meeting of our staff of color. We're continuing our partnership with Primary Source where we, where there is a focus on professional development that is really about global education. We, we have continued PD planned, Cultural Competency, and we just thought that that would be also important to include in addition to some of the curriculum and programs that are in place.
I just want to say thank you for preparing this. I really, and will we, will we be able to post it on the, on the website? I just think it's really helpful. Obviously, when things happen, we have ways to respond to them and we take the necessary steps, but just so parents really can see that on a daily basis, yearly basis, weekly, we're, we're working with our students as part of our curriculum to just keep those things in the forefront and part of the, integrated and embedded into the work that the teachers do throughout the year. I just think that's very helpful and to also address that parent who came last time and asked about, you know, parent engagement and I think this is a very educational piece for parents and a good talking point with your children.
Everything's posted the next day. It's a great question to remind the public, everything's posted the next day.
Yeah, just great. I thought it was, but.
Excellent.
Yeah, I, I agree with what Margaret said and that was going to be one of my questions too, is to make sure that the, the parents and the community at large can see what's really going on here that isn't necessarily obvious. And that needs to be, I think, reiterated when, when an event occurs such as the one in December. I did have, I got a chance to look over all of, I got here early today and so I got a chance to read through all of this. And I will say that I'm, I'm actually quite impressed with everything that is being taught and that, what the next steps are, as well as the cultural competency initiatives. One of the leaders of that group is Angela Burke who just left and I think there are some really terrific things happening now as well as some goals and plans that are in place. I did have one question for you though, Assistant Superintendent Sheen. This Children Discovering Justice, it says pilot underneath it. Isn't that the same one that's been in place in the elementary schools? Because I, I did something where I went to talk to the first graders a couple of years ago about ruby bridges and so forth. Isn't that the Discovering Justice program?
The teachers are using the literature from that program that was in the district a number of years ago. So many of the teachers still use the, the literature. However, the program has been updated and revised and we have piloted, piloted it in every grade this year and hope for full implementation. It's proposed in our budget. And so we would be teaching the updated version of Discovering Justice. But it was very, very popular many years ago and of course, many of, many of the teachers use the, use the, the literature.
So to Dr. Craighead's point in a blast that I put out this week, I appreciate that you found this valuable. We try to get everything out to you Friday. I'll put it in the blast as a link and talk about it being presented at school committee.
Can, can I just ask, can you just say, even for townspeople because of the recent incidents in that equering about, so on the Milton, the Milton Public Schools website, where would, where would it be stored? You know, if you're, if you're...
Charlene posts every document that you're given when, to school committee.
So it would be, so they, so for anyone at home, it would be, you know, you'd go to school committee and then you'd find the documentation there if you're trying to scan through administration. So that's where you, you find the docs? Yeah? Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So very briefly, happenings. My first note reminder, Aladdin tomorrow night, Friday night, and Saturday afternoon. School committee members received in their green packet tonight and an invite, a private invitation and for the public to know that the Wildcat Wellness Center, the opening is Tuesday, January 24th. And thanks to the Milton Foundation for Education and Member Morella who emceed the event. The funds, we've worked closely with the MFE and the Wa, Wa, Wildcat Wellness Center. The opening is 6:30 on January 24th. A long list of donors and invited guests, but if anyone's watching, and I'll put it in my email blast, they're more than welcome to come by and see that center. That will also, we're going to, through community schools, start to make it an option for a community, for an adult education program through our Milton Public School Adult Education. We never had a facility to bring people in. Another little secret is our field house is used two or three mornings a week starting at 5:30 by Milton, Milton senior citizens in a walking program. It's the best kept secret in town.
I know.
School committee members mentioned, we had a phenomenal 150 parents and guardians and preschoolers come the other night. I should, I should get that. That presentation is online, but I'll get it specifically to school committee members. We should have had it in your packet tonight. It was a phenomenal presentation and our parent liaison daily tells us how many people have signed up for every program and I think she wants to have a lottery. It's going to demonstrate her, the interest in preschool, in the Milton Public Schools. And again, I started that presentation by saying with some of those parents, it's going to be a 15-year relationship. So we'll have the same enrollment issues at middle and high school that we have at elementary. Wednesday, January 25th, next Wednesday night for the viewing audience. And if you know anyone with a rising kindergartner, we'll have our kindergarten information night in the Milton High School auditorium at 6:30. The Club of Science Fairs are coming up, those will be posted. And then we have also, on the front of the webpage, I won't rattle them off now, under working with Chairman Walker and Member Morella, we have identified with the PTO leadership and the principals nights that the school committee will be going out and we'll be doing our FY18 budget presentations at each of the schools. So those are on the front of the website and our principals have been charged by Member Morella. She wants to hear that there's too much advertising.
Yes.
She wants to hear that multiple ways parents and guardians are being communicated with for these evenings. Oh, so I jumped to happenings. I'm not doing such a good job tonight on the order of events. So, and the calendar, we voted, so that's the end of my report.
I just, Member Morella and I attended the MLK celebration the other evening and it was, oh, and, and there were other family members there as well and it was fabulous. And there was singing and there was dancing and there was...
Interaction.
There was an interaction with Milton reflecting and it was really just a very peaceful, lovely evening. The fifth graders did a great job singing, the high schoolers, and then the students that went to the init, the interfaith clergy sponsors four students to go to this init. It's, it's short for initiative if I remember correctly. And they learn about, and they become activists and they predicted their presentation on what they're working on this year. And then they showed the four students that are going this coming year. So it was a very inspiring evening, I have to say. It was really, really wonderful. It was really, really wonderful.
And just, if I can follow up, what I was so impressed with is that even though it's a town-based celebration event, through the interfaith clergy association, which is great, but, you know, it was really our public schools that, although St. Mary's the Hills, St. Mary's the Hills, they had their dance group, which they were fabulous. But, you know, we had our gospel choir from the high school. We had all of our students' works, you know, posted all over the church for people to peruse. And, you know, it was great to see their poetry and their artwork. And then the fifth graders performed. And then the presentations by our high school groups. And so, you know, it made me very proud that the large, a large portion of the program was really put, was really funded or, you know, presented by Milton Public Schools. And so, they did a fabulous job, as Margaret said.
Yeah, it's great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Chair Walker stepped down for a moment, and he asked if, we've done Chair's report, item 5A, he asked if we would defer 5B and C until he returns, which should be momentarily. So, that'll bring us to the Finance Subcommittee report. And I think there are two warrants for us to discuss, or at least vote on. Would someone on the Finance Subcommittee care to make a motion?
I'd like to. I move to approve the vendor warrant number 28 dated January 12th, 2017, in the amount of $419,036.08.
Second.
All in favor? It's a four-zero. And today is the 18th.
It's this one here that has, still leaves a couple signatures on it.
Would you like to defer?
I would like to defer that one, please.
So we'll defer number 29 to the next one. All right, old business, I don't think we have anything under 7A. Next meeting agenda items. See the next meeting, that's the first, isn't it?
Yeah, so when is our next meeting?
The first, you're going to have a brief half-hour meeting before your...
Full meeting with the...
It will be at Town Hall. You'll be meeting with the Warrant Committee and the Selectment.
So the first, nothing.
I'm not going to recommend anything.
And I think in that half-hour, we will be sharing the work of the Finance Subcommittee.
Okay. All right, well, I think we're running out of ways to drag our feet here.
There he is.
Weaved your magic wand, and there he appears.
Excellent timing. Because, because we are, we've moved through the agenda. And we're ready for Chair's report items 5B and C.
Okay. So, I want to say a few words about the superintendent's goals. I would really like to commend Mary Gormly. We only talked about this two weeks ago. And the charge that I gave her was to look carefully at the work that we had done in our retreat and subsequently in approving goals. And I asked her to do her best to track with those goals, which we had decided were important directions for the district. And if you look at what the superintendent has provided to us, I think they match almost perfectly. And if you look at the breadth and scope of the challenges that she has agreed to take on, I would say she deserves all of our credit and more. As we said in the evaluation, Mary Gormly is an extraordinary asset to the school district and to this town. So, I'm going to move that we recommend these goals. And I'm going to recommend that we approve these goals. The second part of the discussion is the, what we're calling the feedback summary. As I said to you, all of you publicly, and I'll say it again, I think the quality of the feedback that all of you provided to the superintendent in the evaluation was outstanding and provides a real agenda for the district and for the superintendent and her team to focus. So, we have the goals, and as I said, I'm going to make a motion to approve those. We'll have some discussion though about the feedback summary. What I asked the superintendent to do was to, I kind of did my best to organize it so that she'd have a framework in which to have this discussion. But I asked her to look at it and just give us her thoughts about which of these are current goals that are now incorporated into current goals, which are things that are ongoing that we should continue to monitor. And she will continue to monitor, which I think in one instance, she thought this is actually a school committee policy issue. So her recommendation is that we create a policy. But I think it provides us with a framework for looking at how we're progressing over the next year. So, thanks again, Ms. Gormly. So my first motion, we can have some discussion, I don't expect much. But my first motion is to approve the goals that are submitted by the superintendent.
Second.
Moved by Walker, seconded by Varela, more discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Thank you very much, it's unanimous. Okay, Superintendent Gormly, if you would, just walk us through the feedback summary and your thoughts there.
So, not to repeat what Chairman Walker said, but it was almost a competition between us because I went through your evaluation and I took your goals. So I, everybody learns, we're all learners. And so, I've learned through this process, we'll take the school committee's goals and incorporate them into your goals. So the system is all moving in the same direction. And then I took all of your feedback and waited for Chairman Walker's list of your feedback. And I just briefly want to go over, this is all your feedback. And I want to go over which are, we've got three different categories. Could we move through this, Glenn? Not to read to you, but in your evaluation, suggestions that you had around closing the achievement gap and district-wide technology curriculum referred to tonight, that's ongoing work of the district, I think you can tell that. But in the goals that you just approved, those are two very specific goals. Teaching across the curriculum, you cited particular ideas, which I appreciated. And I give the irony, all of the administrators fed into my evaluation. My evaluation's posted, but all of these goals will be shared with them. Teaching across the curriculum, integrating the curriculum is ongoing work, but I made it a specific professional development goal in the goals that you just approved. So this is all from your feedback. Parent-teacher communication, very timely with tonight. And improving cultural awareness, obviously, ongoing work of the district, but it's one of my goals that you just approved. Multi-year professional development plan. This was one, when I was working with Chairman Walker back and forth, I didn't have a specific goal around professional development. Because of your feedback in my evaluation, I took what, your ideas, and I added ideas that are important for the district. And again, it's ongoing work, professional development, but it's a specific superintendent's goal. Differentiated instruction, again, this is the work of every teacher in the district, every hour of every day. It's ongoing work, but I made it a specific goal in my superintendent's goals. Now, when we came to the area of special education, and I appreciated your feedback about the impact of growth, I thought this was very insightful of in-house programs and the issue of French and English. I didn't make this a specific goal, but this is the ongoing work of the district. Obviously, we talk about this at Finance Subcommittee. Chairman Walker serves in the Inclusion Task Force. Again, this is the work that I've said to Chairman Walker, probably two hours of every single day we're working around our special ed program. The recruitment and retention of teachers of color. This is, again, we do this work, we give you feedback. But this was really a new approach to it that came from your feedback to have an excellent, to have an actual recruitment and retention strategy development plan. And so, we do this work, but this was a new approach to it. And the accountability that we're going to come up with for ourselves. So that's really a new goal in my superintendent's goals for this coming year. Different from what I would have said, we're going to work on this, the strategy. From your feedback, you had mentioned a district-wide policy for technology use. Whenever I see policy, I always say, well, that's a superintendent, that's a school committee issue. So obviously, from tonight's presentation, we're going to be dealing with that. I didn't make that a superintendent's goal, I made it a Milton School Committee goal. And this was an interesting feedback from my evaluation. School-level fundraising, the issue was, came up about district-wide policy and achieving equity across the schools. And we had some very thoughtful brief, because we've only had this for a month. But I'm really not sure whether that's a school committee policy or superintendent's goal. So, I didn't make it a superintendent's goal, but in policy subcommittee, if we have some discussions around that, I just, I suggested that that might be the appropriate placement for that. So again, from Chairman Walker's list, I think we ran about 85% of me going through the evaluation and what Chairman Walker came up with. And I asked Chairman Walker that perhaps we negotiated twice a year, you'll get those books at the end of the evaluation cycle, you'll get them midway. But to report out on some of the standards that you've spent so much time evaluating, 64 standards and elements, and to give some updates so that this doesn't go in a draw, actually, twice a year, give you an update on where we are with these, where we are with my goals and the standards.
So the plan is to report on progress against the goals once in the middle of the period and then at the end. But, and if, what I want to make sure of is that we, this was great feedback, I want to make sure we don't lose it. So if there are areas where you think either we haven't captured the right questions or you'd like to hear about progress, then let us know and we'll report on those things. So you'll definitely hear about progress against goals, that's part of the process. But I wanted to make sure these other things that don't rise to the level of goals, but are still things that you said we should think about, focus on, I want to make sure that we continue that process. Ms. Oberhart?
No, I'm just thinking that, thank you for all of the work, it's a lot of work. I was just thinking, processing Dr. Burke's presentation tonight, and just thinking about how much of education now, sort of, everything sort of overlaps, you know? The whole across the curriculum thing is always something that, that's one of the things I think about, because you listen to her talk about having one person to go to four schools to teach technology, but eventually, it's really the classroom teacher who's using that technology to enhance the curriculum, to do the teaching. So it's, everything sort of meshes. It's not just about science anymore, it's not just about math. You have to teach children, obviously, literacy skills and math skills, but everything sort of molds itself together. And thinking how you move the district forward with all of that happening at once is just a lot. It's just an editorial comment, I suppose, but in thinking about your goals and just thinking about her presentation, that's an important piece, just moving forward, you know? Because, because, because Member Varela talked about a technology curriculum, but really, these are just, it's not really a curriculum. It's just the use of technology as tools, right? So, so just thinking about that, because that's one of the goals here, but, and having a technology policy, I mean, they're all sort of intermingle, but what she presented tonight was just about the tools that you use. It's not a curriculum like every day math. And thinking about how you use those tools to integrate curriculum and teach them is the long term goal, but, you know...
If I can speak to that, like, that's why, I don't know, maybe even what we say, you know, Chairman Walker says about, you know, going into the negotiation. Because I think this is an evolving situation, right? That it, you know, like, I'm going to, and it's changing. I mean, my son has a new hire in eighth grade social studies. And even on the team approach, she is, she's, you know, her colleagues, like, she's making them cowboy out because she is managing that classroom with technology and the access. And, you know, the kids just, they're spot on, they know what they need, they use the technology. They're, you know, the Google, I mean, it's unbelievable. And so, but she's still teaching, she's teaching the social studies curriculum and they're doing that, but, you know, she, the techno, she's using technology to do it. And so, it's just, it's just weird for me to hear about, well, I'll only do, I'll only do this, I'll only do that, it's just, it's meshed, it's, we all got to move forward because it is what it is, you know? So, yeah, it's a really good point, Margaret.
Anyway, thank you for your work on that. A photo, our work together.
Next meeting agenda items.
We already covered that.
We sort of touched on that.
Yeah, we got a full agenda for the 18th. So, next meeting is the first. Dr. Pavlichek and I were talking about location. We'll let you know the location, it depends on how much business we have to conduct. So it'll either be here or at Town Hall, but we'll let you know.
And can I just say one more thing, that if people who are viewing at home, but to just pay attention about those announcements that will be coming from your principals and your PTOs about the budget presentations and how important it is for you all to attend and to give your feedback to us. It's, you know, it's a place where you get your voice to us. And we listen, and we evaluate, and we take that to heart. And even if you're a Calico parent and it's the same presentation, then you only can make the, you know, the Milton High PTO, I mean, Paris PTO one. You know, there's going to be many opportunities for you to go, so to please try to make an effort to make them because it's, you know, it's your voice and it's really important to us, so shout out to that again.
And I'm sorry to interrupt.
Absolutely.
And I think that's a really good point, and I think it bears repeating for anybody who may be watching or reading about this later, that those are the host PTOs. But the goal is really to have it on multiple different nights and multiple different locations to be as accessible for people who have, you know, their work late on Tuesdays. They can only make Thursdays.
And it's the same presentation, it's not specific to that location.
So if you want to advocate for elementary and come to the high school, then rock and roll. Come and advocate, that's what we do.
Move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy for non-union personnel and deployment of security personnel. This is a roll call vote, not to return to public session, the discussion of which in public session could compromise our negotiating position. This is a roll call vote, Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Oberhart?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Mr. Walker, yes, we are in executive session.